Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the June 27th Committee Meeting of the Whole Meeting to Order. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. It can be in various different areas. One option could be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. We do not have anyone in the room tonight, but I will go ahead and wait a moment to see if anybody wishes to raise their hand virtually. And Clerk, did anyone sign up to speak or indicate a desire to speak this evening?
Council President, no one signed up in advance, and I'm monitoring. We do have a few members of the public on the line with us. I'm just taking a quick look here, but I'm not seeing that anyone's indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Geezer. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. And we will also have another public comment period after our question and answer period. I did receive two emails from the community on the topic of tonight's agenda, so I'll summarize those quickly now. One was focused on the ICAP, the Isaguac Climate Action Plan, and wanted us to basically use the funding and add some funding to get the items done from the Isaguac Climate Plan. And then another was supportive of the proposal and very excited about the I-90 under-over crossing and the related light rail and appreciated the focus on that. And so those were the community comments that we received for tonight's agenda item. And let's see, looking back up at the agenda, we have one other item on our agenda tonight. That is ID 1141, the Community Investment Strategy. This will be presented by Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator, and Mayor Mary Lou Polly will be introducing the topic.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. And good evening, council members, staff, and members of the community. It's kind of fun to address you from down here instead of up there. Tonight, you will begin a very important dialogue on how the Isaguac community will invest the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. This federal allocation does come with restrictions on how it can be invested. In brief, they can apply to projects or programs that have been harmed by the COVID-19 pandemic or to advanced lagging infrastructure needs within our communities. As a community, we have made some very difficult decisions over the last two years plus, and we have prudently invested the CARES Act federal funding in a manner that provided stabilization during one of the largest threats to health and life in our community's history. I am proud of the hard decisions that were made to ensure that we were staying safe and working to stay financially sustainable. I am also proud that we were able to partner with others in providing lifesaving vaccines and recovery care directly in this city. The Vaccine Partnership with the Snoke Kwame Tribe and Eastside Fire and Rescue provided easier access to those in our community to lifesaving vaccines. I am proud of our partnership with King County on the COVID Recovery Center. That allowed hundreds who could not quarantine to have a place to isolate and safely recover. I know it feels like a long time ago, but the reality is that the Vaccine Partnership started in August of last year, not even one year ago, and the COVID Recovery Center wound down last September. It feels like a lifetime ago. Cities around the country will have varying plans for the use of ARPA funds. Many will replace lost public sector revenues, use it for hazard pay, hire back employees that were laid off, use it for premium pay, provision of additional public health and safety activities, or capital and infrastructure expenditures. Most cities will likely select a variety of all of the above depending on their city's particular needs. I'm proposing a list of items tonight to council that invests in capital and infrastructure projects, plus one of the major game changers in transportation and mobility in Isaguac, the addition of light rail to our transportation choices, and an additional undercrossing of I-90. Tonight, the council will also discuss how to spend down the ending fund balance and make the investments in the community's number-one stated concern, transportation. Later this summer, council will also begin discussions on the 2324 budget by providing the administration with recommendations on how to invest in all of our community priorities and move the needle on the citywide strategic planning goals. And I believe this event is planned for July. Your discussions tonight provide a historical opportunity to give our community a shot in the arm to move the needle on capital projects and infrastructure. I am looking forward to hearing the discussion, and I'm available tonight for any questions on the draft investment plan. I'll turn it now over to Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. A good evening, members of council. Just one second while I share the presentation. Good evening again. I'm Andrea Snyder. I'm the Deputy City Administrator. And tonight, we are talking about the Community Investment Strategy. This is also a follow-up to previous council discussions that we've had relating to the Capital Finance Community Task Force and their recommendations and how we can implement their recommendations they provided. So we have a number of questions for you tonight and seeking direction for a number of policy decisions. If we can't get through all of them tonight, we do have additional time on July 5th for this conversation to continue, but we'll get as far as we can this evening. So there are quite a few questions. First, does the city council approve of the mayor's proposal in spending remaining ARPA funds on infrastructure, including a focus on transportation and parks and trails? How does the city council feel about spending the majority of the remaining ARPA funds on high-impact investment in one of the city's anchor parks? We'll discuss all of these more, of course, through the course of the presentation, but just want to give you a preview of the type of direction we're looking from you. Third question, we'll be looking for feedback on the Community Investment Fund concept. Does the council agree to keep the focus on small transportation and parks and trail projects for the community to select and respond to through that public engagement process Mayor Polly discussed earlier? Does the council have any changes they want to make to the project selection criteria? And does the council have any feedback on the proposed next step of taking the Community Investment Fund Engagement Plan to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee next month? What is the council feedback regarding spending down ending fund balance and the additional proposed positions? And finally, fifth question, I know it's a lot. What is the city council feedback on the timing for medium-term actions listed in the strategy, including looking at facility needs in 2023 and assessing new revenue sources for additional investment in transportation and parks and infrastructure? So that's some of the direction that I'll be seeking from you tonight. So now, a little bit of background. So as a reminder, the Capital Finance Community Task Force provided several recommendations to council and the administration. Here is a summary, high-level summary of some of those recommendations. So first, they wanted the city to focus on transportation infrastructure as the top priority. Second, they wanted the city to explore additional funding to increase investment in infrastructure, including the potential of a transportation benefit district sales tax, a levy-lid lift, and/or parks district. The task force also recommended that the city reduce the undesignated general fund ending fund balance in order to spend more annually on infrastructure. They also recommended that the city use $9 million of the city's remaining ARPA funds for immediate infrastructure investments. And one thing that they emphasized throughout their conversations and recommendations was they wanted to make sure that the infrastructure investments the city made had a really high impact on the community, and that was something visible and bold even. So with that, we will talk about how this plan addresses those recommendations. So first, let's talk about the administration's recommendations for ARPA funds. So the administration has a little bit more than $9 million in ARPA funds, and what we're proposing is that we would use those funds on an anchor park improvement, Phase 1 of that improvement, so that would be a $6 million investment. That really speaks to the task force's recommendation that we do something immediate that's very high-impact and visible in the community. Also, that the ARPA funds, $2 million of the ARPA funds, go towards a Community Investment Fund, where we have projects that the community would then, through a public engagement process, select as their priorities that they would like to see get done over the next year or so. And finally, with ARPA funds, to invest $1 million in the I-90 crossing and light rail station planning study. This is work that we can do now and to help prepare us for light rail coming in 2044. So first, let's talk about that anchor park project a little bit more. We're again talking about a $6 million investment in an anchor park. Anchor parks are identified, and the Park Strategic Plan is including the Isaguac Creek Corridor area, the Tibbetts Valley Park, and Veterans Memorial Field. And I have Parks Director Jeff Watling on the line if there's any more specific questions you may have for parks tonight. But as you know, we've been going through a parks master planning process for some of these areas, and so this would be an opportunity to complete that master planning process and then implement Phase 1 of that redevelopment or investment in one of these major city parks. So how this would look moving forward is that 2022, we would complete the vision and scope and do more public engagement now through the end of the year on, again, identifying the vision and scope of that Phase 1 park improvement. In 2023, we would design and complete permitting for Phase 1 of the work, and that construction would occur in 2024. And this is something that would be on our immediate steps for an immediate investment and improvement in the park. And so that is the first recommendation for our ARPA funds. The second recommendation, I'd actually like to turn over to Jean Paul, the city's management analyst, to talk about the Community Investment Fund. So Jean, are you on the line?
Yes, Andrea, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, members of the council. As Andrea indicated, I'm Jean Paul. I'm the management analyst in the executive office. And for the second component of the investment strategy, we're recommending creating a Community Investment Fund and allocating $2 million that will allow the community to really help decide what projects they'd like to see funded. For this, we're proposing that the administration will help identify a short list of projects. And as you can see with the criteria there, we're recommending that those projects are eligible for ARPA funding and can be completed by the deadline where ARPA funds need to be spent, that those projects focus on transportation and parks and trails projects, which aligns with the task force's recommendation, and really that these projects have already been vetted and approved by the council through the Capital Investment Plan or CIP process. If you could, go to the next slide, please. And once we identify those projects, if there are multiple projects where we really need to prioritize and create a shorter list, we're recommending using the criteria from the task force in order to help prioritize and create that short list. The top criteria that the task force identified for their prioritization exercise included addressing pain points across the city, seeing a higher return on investment or having a high impact relative to the costs of the project, addressing areas from the 2021 community survey that were identified as highest importance but least satisfaction for members of the community, or projects that really would improve life and safety. So in terms of next steps for this component of the investment strategy, the administration will develop that project list. We'd like to discuss both the list and the engagement process with the Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee beginning next month. But we look to launch that public engagement process in the fall after summer vacation, where we can really maximize the engagement with the community.
Thank you, Jean. Next, and finally, for ARPA funds, the multimodal I-90 crossing study. This $1 million study would identify how the crossing will incorporate Sound Transit's Link Light Rail Station with that crossing, evaluate the land use impacts of the different alternatives for locations of the crossing and concepts for the crossing. It would also be the first step in helping us develop a project funding plan, would identify potential environmental impacts of the alternatives that would either need to be avoided or mitigated, and it would also develop a preliminary construction phasing plan. So in addition to spending ARPA funds, the task force had recommended spending down the general fund, undesignated ending fund balance by investing in infrastructure. The latest projections that we have from finance show that we anticipate a 25% that will have 25% of general fund expenditures at the end of the year. This may change come August, when we do more forecasting and have more information about our revenues, but the best information we have right now is that we're looking at 25%. And currently, the city council policy is to have 15% to 20% of general fund expenditures as a reserve or as an ending fund balance. And so the task force had actually recommended that the city move away from that 20% figure by policy and instead make a policy change towards 15% so that that money can be more invested in infrastructure instead of kept in reserves or an ending fund balance. And so for us to go from 25% of general fund expenditures, where we believe we are today, to reduce it to that task force recommendation of 15% of general fund expenditures, that's about $5.8 million. And again, it is subject to change depending on how the forecast goes. We'll have more information in August as we prepare for the budget, but that's our best guess today. And so we have a proposal on how to spend down that general fund, ending fund balance. Andrea? We have a question. Council Member DeMichele?
Thank you. When we're talking about reserves, are we talking about undesignated reserves or the...?
Yes, undesignated reserves.
All right. I think that really needs to be emphasized when we're talking about this because we're not talking about the whole general fund reserves.
That's correct. Yes, just undesignated.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. And so we have a proposal for how to spend down those undesignated ending fund balance. And so while we think we have about $5.8 million that we could spend down to get us more to that 15% number, we're proposing to spend $3 million of that until we have more information as we get closer to the budget process. So those $3 million, our proposal is to have more positions. We're at a point in the city where our limitations in being able to do more transportation or other infrastructure projects is really limited by the staff that we have and their capacity to manage these projects. And so we are requesting two additional transportation engineers. One of those positions was reduced during COVID and has not been replaced. So we're asking for that position to be restored, plus an additional position. We're also asking for one administrative specialist or program coordinator to assist with the implementation of the capital projects. Our engineers are doing a lot of paperwork shuffling and not able to spend as much time on what we've really hired them for as their technical expertise. And so we'd like an administrative specialist, or perhaps a program coordinator will need to finalize that classification. But that would be about $104,000 per year, and they would be really supporting the engineers in completing these projects and doing a lot of the paperwork that's required, reporting, et cetera. Then, we're also requesting one term limited parks planner. That would be a term of two years to really assist in this anchor project and as well with some of the other parks projects that perhaps the public would select through the Community Investment Fund process. Finally, we're asking for $2.4 million of that ending fund balance to be set aside for the budget process and rolled over to the 2023-2024 budget and set aside for, as yet, unspecified infrastructure projects, but that's something that we can discuss during the budget-setting process. And we have a question, Deputy Council President Walsh.
Thank you. Super quick clarifying question. So each of these positions are one FTE, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So two full-time equivalent transportation engineers, one administrative specialist. Those, we anticipate to be ongoing needs. The parks planner would be limited to two years, but still 40 hours a week.
Okay.
Yeah, but limited to two years. Okay, so that really covers more of the immediate actions that we would start this year in 2022. Next, I'd like to summarize the timeline of the strategy for looking out ahead through 2026. And so as we discussed in 2022, just to review, we would invest in transportation by adding staff capacity with the strategy. We would begin preparations for that I-90 crossing and light rail study. We would begin that community survey and engagement process to select additional small capital projects through the Community Investment Fund that add up to that $2 million of ARPA money. And we would complete the visioning as part of the anchor park project Phase 1. You know, we do that scoping exercise. That's all in 2022. In 2023, we're proposing the administration come up with a facilities financing plan. Through the task force recommendations, they had said that transportation is the number-one priority, but didn't select after that what was number two or number three. They said parks and trails is really important, facilities is also really important. We don't want to prioritize among those or choose among those. And for facilities, we do have some urgent needs. We have a fire station that is needed to improve response time in North Isaguac. We have some needs here in the municipal court and council chambers and other needs that we would like to discuss further and explore with council how best to fund those facility needs. So we'd like to come up with a plan to finance those in 2023. We also, in 2023, would be completing those community-selected projects that were voted on through that Community Investment Fund process. We are starting the transit plan process in 2022. And so 2023, we would complete that transit plan, which would then inform projects that would go on the CIP. We would update the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the Transportation Improvement Plan. And we would, in 2023, begin that design and permitting for the anchor park project, while also the Parks Department would be updating the strategic plan. That work begins next year as well. So all those efforts would then inform the next steps. Here we go in 2024. We would, of course, act on what facilities financing plan that we came up with with the council, pending council direction. We would also begin to have those discussions about a transportation ballot measure as a follow-up to the task force recommendations. And so that means that we would be looking at what is that suite of projects that the city should pursue through a ballot measure? That would be informed by that work we conducted in updating the Capital Improvement Plan and the CIP the year before. And we'd also discuss the timing of that ballot measure and when the timing would be best and, you know, whether we should do a ballot measure at all, right? So all those discussions would really begin in 2024. The anchor park would still be progressing along, and we would be constructing with that big anchor park investment in 2024 and complete the park strategic plan. And through that park strategic plan process is also when we'd really begin exploring the topic of a parks district. The park strategic plan will have a lot of public engagement with the Parks Board and others. And so that's when we'd like to begin discussions about that and make some progress on that recommendation. So moving along to 2025, we would be further develop the funding recommendations from that park strategic plan. And we'd begin transportation improvements from a ballot measure if applicable. If that ballot measure, if we go forward with a ballot measure in 2024, then we would begin implementation in 2025. If we determined that 2024 isn't the time for a ballot measure, then we'd move that to the date that's decided. So these dates that anticipate the ballot measure in this timeline are really just the soonest possible we'd recommend having those discussions and considering a ballot measure. Those discussions are really going to guide whether that ballot measure even occurs or when we would do it in this timeline. This is really just to show, here's the soonest possible that we think that we would recommend exploring those conversations. And then in 2026, following that, the parks strategic plan conversation and parks funding conversations, if we do anticipate a parks district ballot measure, 2026 would be the soonest possible. We think we would recommend pursuing that. So again, these are kind of the soonest possible dates. There's a lot of discussions that need to happen before we get there, a lot of community conversations, a lot of planning that needs to get there. This is really just us trying to anticipate when we would start those discussions and build out a plan from there. Okay, and I see a question from Council Member Mertz.
Thank you. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, the I-90 crossing and light rail study, how long will that take?
I've been told that will take a year.
All right. That's what I kind of maybe expected. This makes it look like we can get it done this year, and I didn't think we could spend anywhere near, do anything near a million-dollar study by the end of this year. So it would be next year.
That's correct. What we would get started on is writing the RFP and trying to select a consultant to help us with that study. So we can get started, but we will not be able to complete that this year.
Got it. Thank you.
And a question from Deputy Council President Walsh. And it's been delayed. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. So as far as next steps go, in July, we would be returning to the council July 5th to complete this discussion and whatever follow-ups come out of this evening. Also in July, there's a Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to discuss public engagement and other topics related to the Community Investment Fund. In August, we'd begin recruitment for those authorized positions pending council direction. In September, we would deploy the outreach and engagement plan for that Community Investment Fund. So those are just some of the most immediate next steps and public and council touches. And that concludes my presentation. Any other questions? Excellent. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah?
Great, thank you. In the executive summary, so in the memo, it says that there's 4.5 million to be determined by community outreach and the upcoming budgetary process. So I was trying to figure out what goes into that 4.5 because it's actually on the presentation, $2 million for the community fund, and then there's some other budgetary process funds, but I couldn't quite figure out what is going into that bucket.
Yeah, so that would be the $2 million from the Community Investment Fund, as you said, as well as, it refers to this ending fund balance. So we have 5.8 that we've identified so far and a recommendation to spend $3 million of it. So that leaves some money, or 2.4 right here, I'm sorry, 2.4 of unspecified infrastructure projects to be rolled over into the 2023 and '24 budget process. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so we are considering that 2.4, in addition to the two from ARPA, that 2.4 million unspecified to, again, be a community fund. Because that's the part that I'm wondering about, community outreach.
So the community outreach will largely be around the Community Investment Fund and then the budget-setting process. then the budget setting process is when we'll discuss this 2.4 million. Is that, so it's unspecified projects that still need to be worked out through a process?
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Martz?
So I'm trying to wrap my head around that 2.4 million because if we don't spend it, and if we say, okay, it'll go into next year and it'll be part of next year's budget, but then if at the end of next year, we're still at 25% ending fund balance, then we'll still have just always been 25% ending fund balance, like 25 or 30 or 35%, like we always do every year. So I'm just trying to understand if we're trying to do that, what does that actually do in the next year's budget process? Do we go into the budget with already a proposal in there for 2.4 more than we would have if we hadn't put two, because there'll be other, I mean, there'll be a budget, right? And it'll be aiming to get to a certain percentage. I'm just trying to understand how this, what this 2.4 actually does.
Thank you. So we, what the 2.4 does is it really earmarks it for infrastructure projects. So the task force had recommended that instead of having planning for a, you know, a large ending fund balance, that we try to spend it down and that we spend it down specifically on infrastructure and things that support infrastructure investment. And so that's what it does. It really tries to ensure that this money that has generally been left over year after year, that we invest it more and do more with it for the community. And so we would keep a really close eye on that through the budget setting process for 2023, 24, and try to make sure that we are with this money, really investing it in infrastructure versus other types of city expenditures.
Anything else?
It's just, it's not a mechanism I've seen used in previous budgets, so I'm just trying to understand what as a policy decision it actually does. Does it also commit us to shoot for 15% instead of 15 to 20%? Would it change our financial policies document?
Yes, and I think that's a conversation that we anticipate having in the 2023, 24 budget setting process is really contemplating a reduced ending fund, undesignated ending fund balance. So not having that, not planning for that 20% as we've done in years past, but planning for something closer to the 15%. That would be the policy change.
And Councilmember Martz, members of the council, if I can just add, we hear you loud and clear that you're uncomfortable with the large ending fund balance. We've had a number of years of, as you have all lived through it, a whole variety of different factors. So we sit here at the end of June, we are in the process of working on the operating budget proposals for 23, 24. So we already know the administration that we'll be coming to you to spend down those fund balances. I think as the deputy city administrator is saying, we want to commit tonight that 2.4 of that, we are going to be putting toward capital projects. There's still additional dollars, we are still working on that. Ultimately, the council has to decide how comfortable you truly are. We are still in a rebuilding mode with our staff. You will hear from us in August that we are still underspending the budget because of the number of vacancies that we have, so that fund balance will continue to grow. At the same time, there's other needs in the community that have nothing to do with the capital infrastructure that we're talking about that would be one-time funding eligible. So I think tonight, the message is 2.4 million is what we're looking at to put into the 23, 24 budget on the capital side. There'll be additional expenditures recommended, and then ultimately the council will have to decide how far down you want to go.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Council President Walsh. Oh, I have so many questions. Most of them are interesting. So the number one priority coming out of the investment task force was transportation. And depending upon how I choose to look at it, I can either get 11% or 33% of the ARPA funding is going into transportation with a lion's share going to parks. How does that work?
The other, there's other ways that we're implementing that recommendation to focus on transportation. And what we also heard from council with your feedback is saying maybe a little bit of discomfort with declaring transportation as the number one priority right now. I think there were concerns that we wanted to make sure that we were picking the right projects to invest in in the future. So what, how this overall strategy responds to the task force recommendation was that we look at the, any transportation funding ballot initiative first before we look at a parks district, for example. So that makes the timeline for looking at additional revenues to provide, additional investments in transportation, doing that, really starting that in 2024 before parks. And so there's a number of things that are in place, that are underway right now, like the transit plan and other things that will inform that discussion. So that's another way that the strategy responds to that priority for setting transportation first, perhaps before some of these other conversations.
I have more questions, but Councilmember Martz, did you want to respond to that? I thought you did.
Councilmember Martz?
So as a former member of the long-term task, financing task force, I appreciate your question and I appreciate the urge to keep honest to the feedback that that task force created. I would say that the feedback was nuanced because we broke things down into three phases, right? And we said things we could do near term, specifically with ARPA dollars, things we could do medium term with certain funding mechanisms and things that we might do long term with yet different funding mechanisms. So in the spirit of that, I would say maybe at the point where this bill, or this, if we get general agreement this evening on what we want to do, at the point where it comes back, maybe a refresh of that and understanding how this fits into that sort of medium and long-term conversation that was had. Because it was really, a lot of work went into separating what would you do with near term dollars and what would you do with longer term dollars. Thank you.
All right, picking back up. I noticed that in the plan, there's no contemplation of using any debt. Was that the reason we're not considering any debt for, so we could chunk off something bigger or faster?
We are contemplating using debt, I think especially as we talk about 2023 and that facilities financing plan, and debt will likely be related to our conversations in 2024 regarding transportation and whether or not the city moves forward with a ballot measure or any revenue, new revenues the city would like to pursue to help pay off debt related to increased investment in transportation. So we didn't list that explicitly in the strategy, but that's certainly part of the conversations.
Yeah, I'm just struck that we were looking for ways to spend down ending fund balance, which is excess revenue, which could then be used to retire debt. And so instead of doing a bunch of little things, using ending fund balance, we could take on something big and impactful and meaningful and do it with debt and then use ending, we wouldn't have ending fund balance because those additional dollars that are revenue in excess of expenses could be used for debt service. So just a thought to look at that a little differently. I'm looking at the capital improvement plan from, that we adopted in 2021, April or May or something like that last year. And there's some really great transportation initiatives on here that we could do. For instance, you know, the non-motorized access on East Mamish. And so I'm just kind of curious why we're not looking at things that are on the capital improvement plan for ways to invest in infrastructure.
So I think, great point about how we're using, how we're proposing using ARPA funds or ending fund balance in relation to debt and what that strategy is. As far as your question about why are we not looking at the CIP, we are looking at the CIP based off of the projects that are being proposed in the community investment fund, the I-90 crossing study. Some of these projects are really moving up from future years into something that we can do more immediately. So these projects are really derived from the CIP. But, you know, I appreciate your point about how we're considering using debt in relation to some of these other bigger project options.
All right, two more, I'm almost done, I really am. So when I look at the CIP and I look at the I-90 crossing, which would have been the study, when we did the CIP, we estimated it 3.4 million, not a million. So trying to rationalize the difference between what we thought it was going to cost in the CIP and what we think it's going to cost now.
It may be that additional study is needed. This is really going to get us kicked off at make some progress right now. And there are going to be additional environmental studies that are going to be required after this. This isn't, this isn't the last plan we'll see and then be ready to build a light rail station or a crossing. This really just gets us started.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if we have the funding and that was a 2022, 2023 timeframe on that study, why not do the whole thing when we got the money? And then my final question is, was an anchor park in the CIP? Because I couldn't find it.
There is a discussion about anchor parks in the park strategic plan and investment in those. I would have to phone a friend here and see if Jeff Watling can speak directly to anchor parks and what's in the CIP. So Jeff, are you, he's not on the line? Okay, I thought he'd be here tonight.
Double booked.
Oh, he is, okay. I understand he's double booked, so we'll have to come back to you with an answer on that.
Okay, I'll look for it. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much for the detailed presentation. Piggybacking off Councilmember Martz's earlier question on the I-90 crossing study, so we think that's something that can be accomplished in a year. Do we have a good sense of what the timeline is for Sound Transit to then approach us about next steps from their end? And do we feel satisfied that if we have a study after a year, it'll still be useful when Sound Transit comes forward? Just genuinely asking.
I'm going to be the blunt talker tonight, so I'll apologize in advance. If the council would like to see light rail come to Issaquah, we need to start spending money now. If we do not spend any money, we will get a call from Sound Transit 15 years from now. And so we don't know all of the parameters here. Mayor Pauli, I think, has made it very clear that this is a community priority. We also don't want to say, let's take all the ARPA money because, gosh, we could be studying this forever. So what I think we have put before you this evening is our best estimate to what we need to do to jumpstart this project, to get Sound Transit, to pay attention, that we are serious in Issaquah about having light rail come here. We know what the processes are between the Federal Highway Administration, the transit funding, we know what steps we need to take. We are saying, the mayor is saying, we do not want to wait for Sound Transit for that phone call 15 years from now, we want to get started now. So a lot of what you're seeing tonight is not in the easy buckets that perhaps other CIP discussions have been. And I'm speaking for the mayor and she's standing, you know, 10 feet from me. But I think it's an important point to make that this is meant to be transformative. This is meant to say, the pandemic has been horrible scourge on everyone, this community, the entire world, but we need to move on. And we're ready to move on, we have these funding there, we need to give something back to our residents in addition to transportation, which is a much longer term piece. That's why you're hearing so much about the anchor parks. So Mayor Pauli, I apologize, I'll get off my soapbox for now. But I think it's really important to put this in the proper light and that this is a very different kind of discussion. This is not our regular CIP, what are we going to do this year? How are we going to move the deck chairs around? This is really a signal from the administration that we need to take a different approach. We need to take the dollars that we have, use them as a catalyst and move on. Mayor Pauli, I'll shut up.
You took my wind, never mind. I just have a few details to add. You know, over the last year or two, talking with WashDOT, I've asked frequently, when would they be ready to sit and talk with us about the pre-planning for a Sound Transit light rail station? It very likely will be on one side or the other or on top of that right away. And when that partner is ready to come and talk with us, I think we begin the pre-planning. If I were to enhance on the narrative you've already heard, the $1 million is a down payment. It's a start of a process that brings stakeholders to the table that can then come back to council and to their respective agencies and let them know, we have a $3.5 million process, but we've invested $1 million in order to get WashDOT, Metro, Sound Transit, City of Issaquah, and whoever else we need at the table. I've sent information to both our state senator, the head of Sound Transit, the head of Metro, our King County Councilmember and a few others to say that you would be having this very important conversation over the next two meetings. And again, to frame it as, this is the first step, and we need to take the first step in order to figure out what the rest of them look like. Sound Transit is very unlikely to assign us the project manager right now, but that does not mean they will not sit at the table with us and talk about it. The one advice I got from the former mayor of Redmond and former mayor of Bellevue was, they'll tell you when they want to start, but you'll know when you need to start. And where the conversation started on the Sound Transit schedule, they felt like they ran out of time. So it's not too soon to be doing this. This is a good investment.
Thank you. One, only one thing to add to all of that, which is that our transportation staff have indicated that this first step allows us to be really competitive for future grants. And so we can start to leverage grant funding to pay for additional steps in the process.
All right, well, thanks, that makes a lot of sense. So it's not necessarily that the end of next year, council will have a deliverable from this, that we'll see this is the start of a larger, maybe the beginning of stakeholdering and then the start of a larger process.
Yes, and I think it's the start of understanding what those future asks are, right? So it's looking at project costs, funding plans. I think there's going to be a lot that we get out of this study that will guide our next steps. And so that's, that's really, that's really the goal.
Thank you, and I have one more question, if that's okay. And I've been trying to think about how to frame it so it doesn't sound adversarial. So let me just say that off the bat, it's not meant to do that. I'm just interested in exploring the administration's thinking and how you came about the thinking for the anchor parks. So when I think about ARPA money in general, transformative is a word that comes up a lot. You know, we tend to think about it on the task force, we tend to think about it a lot as what qualifies as spending that we can have for ARPA. But, you know, if we think about it in its true form, it's a stimulus, right? To create economic prosperity in communities, to help lift, you know, the American economy. That's the reason why I did that. So from that lens, I'm interested in exploring why the administration thinks an investment, large investment in an anchor park would help create economic prosperity in the community. And if you can kind of speak about it from that lens, it would be really helpful for me.
Great. I think that there's a couple of responses we have. One is that we also know that during the pandemic, so you mentioned economic prosperity, there's a lot of studies out there that talk about the economic effects of big park investments, things like that. But also, coming out of the pandemic, we heard from our community how much they appreciated parks. And it was the only thing that was open to the public that they could do for a long time. And so we heard more of an importance and appreciation for our parks and more of a desire to invest in them. And so we felt like this would be an opportunity to have a big investment with high impact, high visibility that would, that would really uplift quality of life and provide that great investment for the community. So those are some of the thoughts that we've heard based off of the community feedback we'd had. It was also mentioned, if you recall, in some of the task force discussions, the desire to have maybe a big impactful park project with ARPA funds. I am looking at the city administrator, I'm wondering if he has something to add? He looked like he did before.
Mayor Pauli does, and also Jeff Watling is on the line. So Council President Walsh, if you'd like to, we can go back to that question regarding the funding for the anchor parks in the current budget.
It's so nice that they're giving me so much mic time today. This is fun. For me, the reason I was looking at an impactful parks project was because a lot of the parks that we have in Issaquah have not, and Councilmember Martz knows this very well, have not had investments over the long term if the parks themselves are older. And many of our signature parks, such as Tibbetts and Memorial Field, really haven't changed in decades and decades. And the community, I think it's, I'm going to phrase it this way, it is a impact to the community if they could have a outdoor place with the kinds of activities they've been asking for that Issaquah has been yet able to provide. So for example, looking at Tibbetts Park with grass fields, which probably was a great idea in the 80s, we all know that turf fields would turn that park from a three-month-a-year park into a 12-month-a-year park. It would increase the diversity. It would increase the diversity of activities and provide opportunities for abled and disabled. And so we don't have a lot of those components in our older city parks. So for me, the impact was an outdoor, positive, helpful place for all to gather. And the same with Memorial Park. It's got a lovely, very fun, old-fashioned grass baseball field and a great play structure. But if you visited other cities or even just the state park and you see what improvements are being done in the last decade for children with disabilities, adults with disabilities, and all the different kinds of uses that people are now expecting from parks, you don't see that in this park either. I feel like this is something that would be highly visible, quickly built, and widely enjoyed. And that was how I defined impact.
Thank you. And so we have Director Watling on the line.
Yes, we do. Council President, good evening. Jeff, thank you for joining us. You are double booked tonight, I know. There are some questions regarding anchor parks and current budgeting for anchor parks. It was noted that they're not in the CIP, but I believe there are planning dollars elsewhere. Could you maybe give a little bit of explanation there?
Sure. You, you bet. I believe within the CIP, there is funding for Tibbetts Valley Park, for Memorial Park, and the Issaquah Creek Corridor. So I guess I'll pause there and maybe seek clarification on what the question was, Council Chair.
So I think the question was related to whether the projects were in the CIP, and perhaps it was that we were looking at it as anchor park improvements, whereas you're saying that the planning for those parks that had done, been done through the Park Strategic Plan was already listed individually for each of the quote-unquote "anchor parks" within the CIP. Is that correct?
Yes, that's how it lives now. And maybe I can, I could speak a little bit about the etymology, the, how this progressed from the park plan forward. So the park plan was adopted in 2018. As the mayor said so well, a lot of the community feedback was, hey, we love our parks, but they're tired. And a lot of the, the more established parks have not been invested in a long time. And so you might recall, before the pandemic, we endeavored on a pretty big master planning effort. That was all wrapped into one master planning budget, the CIP. And that's what kicked off this anchor park discussion, where in 2019, we went out and had a lot of community engagement around what we called the anchor parks, which was Veterans Memorial Playfield and the conglomeration of parks around it, Depot and Pedestrian Park, and then Tibbetts Valley Park and the Issaquah Creek Corridor. So you saw within your budgeting, planning dollars for that work that happened in 2019. As the pandemic hit us in 2020, and I think the most recent CIP effort during the pandemic, we have now tried to identify budget and planning for each of those as separate parks, knowing as we eventually continued in that work, that the actual sort of finishing of the planning and then the eventual design and construction of those would need to be hap, would need to happen as separate, separate parks. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. And so, do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, it was, it was my question. So I think that's great. And I, I may have confused. I was thinking anchor park was anic, an anchor, not anchors. So, so that, that's helpful. But when I look at the, and I guess if we suck everything forward so we can accelerate it, but I look at the CIP for 2022 to 2024, since that's our period, I look at Tibbetts Valley, I look at this Veterans Park, and I look at the Creek Corridor, I see about $2 million worth of planned expenditure. So is the plan then to accelerate some of these things that we had in the '25 through '27 kind of timeframe for those parks?
Yes, the $6 million would be an accelerated investment. A lot of that work as well includes some planning, some planning dollars as well. And I don't, forgive me, I don't have the CIP in front of me. I was just coming from a park board meeting. I don't know if all that $2 million is actual funded or if some of that is, is unfunded at this time. But the goal would be identify, identify one of those anchor parks and accelerate an initial Phase 1 investment.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, and our next question from Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Council President. Want to compliment the administration for thinking a little bit outside the box and trying to figure out ways that we could creatively use our funds. Barb B. Michelle, Councilmember D. Michelle, went to the AWC conference, and there was an innovation section, a class that she went to. And she commented to me this evening that she was very excited that the city was already doing many of the things, or almost all the things, that were in the innovation conference. And I think this project as well, the undertaking that you've, that you've started here is part of that as well. I always look at, you know, what could possibly go wrong as we look at these big expenditures and the innovation that we're trying to take on. And I'm looking at the, the new positions that we have here. And with the tight labor market and the conditions that are out there, if we're not able to fill either the two transportation engineer positions, the one program coordinator for public works, or the one-term limited parks planner, my question is, if we don't fill those positions, will any of the projects and things that we're talking about tonight not be done? Or will we still be able to, to make them even though we're not filling the positions here?
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Certainly, we need staff to complete the work. And so I think we have been having a pretty good track record of being able to hire really qualified engineers over the past year. And so we would need staff to complete the work, but certainly even adding an additional engineer and program coordinator, admin assistant to support them would go a really long way in being able to implement some of these projects.
Thank you. I know that when we discussed the TIP, there were a couple of projects that we wanted to do, but we couldn't do because we didn't have the staff for it. And I want to see us get as much done as we possibly can. And any innovative, new ideas that HR might have or the administration might have to recruit and find people to get these positions filled, I think, to get the positions filled, I think will go a long way to getting us to the goal that I think we all want to get to in terms of being innovative and using the city's funds, the funds and tax dollars that our citizens have put in there to the best use possible. So thank you.
And Deputy Council President Hall, did you, your, okay, Councilmember D. Michelle?
Thank you. Just to follow up on that question, I did notice that one of those positions is term limited and the others are not. And could you just explain why that one particular position was designated that way?
Yes, I think that we can see the need for this position. As maybe you recall, we had two parks planner positions before the pandemic. That was, one of those positions was reduced during our expenditure reductions during the pandemic. We have a term limited because we think that there's certainly going to be enough work for that position over the next two years. I think at that point, then, we'd like to reevaluate as the park strategic planning process has been completed and as we consider what are the next steps for a potential parks district. And so, but we're, we're pretty sure, we're confident we have the work for that position for the next two years and then timing of additional resources and when they would be needed. We want to, we want to be able to evaluate within two years to see if that would be a permanent need or not.
Thank you.
I'm going to wait until Deputy Council President Hall decides whether or not this is an actual question. Okay, go, go right ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. I've been going back and forth on this. So I want to dig a little bit deeper into, into my last question about thinking of ARPA as a stimulus for economic prosperity. So thank you all for responding to that. Clearly, parks are a great economic investment in communities. I guess I'm interested in exploring the administration's decision-making on that, though, because I think we could all agree that investment in mobility, especially, you know, alternative, alternative, you know, opportunities for mobility, multimodal access, is also a good economic driver and would be a good use of ARPA dollars. So I'm just curious if the administration kind of went through an exercise at all and said, okay, these are both good economic engines for a community, but we believe this one rises above, and that's why we're proposing so much of ARPA funding for that one in particular. So I'm just curious if you had that conversation through that lens, not necessarily because this is the best impact project we can have, but through kind of an economic prosperity lens? If you could speak to that.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. The short answer is yes. You know, I, we spent a lot of time, myself, Andrea, the mayor, Jeff Watling, who's on the line with us, you know, really thinking about the future of this community. Why do people want to be here? Do people want to be here because there's Trader Joe's and Target and every grocery store you could imagine? Do they want to be here because, or near a hospital? Why do they want to be here? You know, we keep coming back to one thing. It's the quality of life. It's the outdoor experience. Why do people spend $1 million for a condo in this community? It's because of those outdoor experiences. So as we look more broadly at the future of Issaquah, we really believe we need to continue to make those park investments. So as you've heard tonight, the two existing parks, the, 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 the golden necklace, the, along the creek, that's what's going to keep this community viable for the long term. And we really think that making those investments are really important. I'm disappointed tonight that we seem to be thinking that we're spending no money on transportation, and that's not true. There are dollars spent here. One of the challenges with many transportation projects is that there's many, many partners. We can't just go out and do something because we want to. We have to work with state agencies. We have to work with property owners. Councilmember Hunt and I had long talks today about sidewalks on Squawk Mountain. I mean, it would be great if we could just say, okay, we're going to do that, but all those properties and all the right-of-way issues that we need to work through. And we're prepared to do that. But you're hearing tonight, I think, is what can, and this is Mayor Pauli's vision, you know, what can we do to ensure that this community thrives? And really, that quality of life piece, we're not going to get an Amazon headquarters. You know, we're not, and that's not what this community needs. We'll continue to look at the central Issaquah plan as that engine. But people want to recreate here. They want to enjoy the outdoors here. They want to be, have access to that. And if we, as a community, as a city government, continue to make those investments, I mean, I think that's where some of our economic prosperity comes from. You look at what's happening in Bellevue, thousands and thousands of jobs. Where are these people going to live? You know, many of them are going to want to come here, and we're going to want them here because they're going to have high-paying jobs. They're going to want to enjoy those, those benefits and amenities. So again, as many of you have said tonight, this is a very different kind of conversation. But we absolutely did think about these things. Parks can be an economic engine. Parks can be economic development. And we can invest in parks, but we can also make the investments in the transportation. I mean, we've got a strategic plan and master mobility plan and a, and a climate action plan, all done in the last three years. There are many community members that would like us to be done with all of this by the end of next month. That's just not possible. And so the mayor's vision here is, let's, let's do this in a, in a way that brings all of these things together, that works on all of them, but also be thoughtful about how we pay for them, because we do not have the money to pay for new things. We do not have the money to pay for the maintenance of things. And we need to be thoughtful about that in the long term. Long answer to a short question. I apologize.
Councilmember Mart.
So when we talk about parks investment, I remember when we put together the three disparate pieces of real estate that made Confluence Park. And we had at the time, something like, and it was the previous, it was a different parks director, but we had something like a $15 million plan for that park. And for that to be the cornerstone for really all of our parks efforts, at least in the valley. And I guess my question is, how much of that $15 million have we actually done? And it's, this is a, this is a couple-parter. How much have we done? Has council gotten sort of an update on what still is the plan for that park? Because I hear a $6 million potential parks investment, and it seems obvious to me that there's still things we want to do with Confluence. But it doesn't seem like council has heard a lot about where Confluence is at or where Confluence is going for some time.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. I'm wondering, Jeff, you're still on the line. Can you speak to that question?
Yeah, it's a great question. Thank you, Councilmember Mart. I do not have specific dollars, but I can tell you, I know from that original Confluence Park vision, a great vision, a significant amount of that investment required a different city facility investment, and that is the, the park operations and facilities, maintenance shop moving. That, that obviously hasn't happened yet. And so I think to date, you know, with the addition of the bridge in 2018, some of the irrigation improvements that were done in 2019, I can get you a running total of what that is. But I know some of the, the more expensive future phases required, in essence, replacing the shop facility, moving the shop facility somewhere else, and then repurposing that shop facility as, as future park.
And, and would that, would that $6 million, if we said we wanted to go to parks, would that potentially, could, is it, is it something the city would entertain, having a fraction of that $6 million go towards moving that facility such that we could commence with the additional phases of that park? Because I think if we dusted off the original plan, we would see there was a lot more to Confluence that we wanted to do. Not that Confluence isn't beautiful, it really is, but it was a pretty ambitious plan back in the day.
Very ambitious and a great, a great pearl on the necklace for certain. You know, project readiness is a very important goal with these ARPA funds as well. And so we could certainly dust that off and take a look at it. I would, I would hesitate in saying moving those two really important shop maintenance groups is going to be a pretty expensive endeavor before we can even invest in repurposing that place as parks. But we can take a closer look at that.
Again, just curious, given that it is our premier park in the valley, and not that I don't love the idea of, of doing something transformative with Tibbetts, I really do love the idea of, of transforming Tibbetts. I was just curious, given that it is really the centerpiece, including centerpiece of our long-term plans to transform the creek. Thank you.
Counselmember Mart, that's an excellent question. I was on the Development Commission when the plan came through, and it is ambitious, and there are some elements to go. The point of the conversation tonight on the ARPA funds is that many of the things you do are the pieces of a larger puzzle. And you've heard me many, many times talk about your inventory of facility assets that needs to come back to you so you can evaluate what you want to keep, where your needs are, and how all those shifting pieces will work. Some of that work is happening this year under Director of Administrative Services, Autumn Monahan, but that's just another one of those on the list of where that goes may be influenced by which pieces of land you decide to keep and which pieces of land you decide to dispose of. And just for Councilmember, or Deputy Council President Hall's question, again, we are trying as an administration to find projects that are ready to go. Because while two years may sound like a long time, it's absolutely not. And so we're doing a transit study, we'll get some information from the transit study, you'll make some decisions, you'll make some recommendations, not really sure we can spend the money by then. And so really want to make sure that we have a plan, that we don't have to give back any of our ARPA dollars. And I think if you're not on council, people don't realize how so many of the things you work on are puzzles that have so many pieces that are happening at different times. My last one is going to be, Councilmember Ray's question about the CIP. I think there's wide support that the CIP process, list, criteria, everything be looked at holistically with the climate action plan and the master mobility plan, and get all these documents and these, the lists that are in the CIP coordinated. And that's a process you all are going to have to go through with the community. And so the CIP is the best we have right now, but the CIP may not really And so the CIP is the best we have right now, but the CIP may not really look like that in a couple of years, once those activities of coordinating them happen. So you guys are asking really great questions. I'm not sure if the public understands how complicated your task is tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to take a look at the council, see if there are any other questions. Okay. Then at this point, I am going to end our questions and ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who have indicated and desire to make a comment.
Council President, we do have a few members of the public with us. Let's just give them a moment. If you have interest in making comments, please raise your virtual hand or send me the host a comment in the chat. I'll monitor this for just a moment. All right, I'm not seeing anyone indicate desire to speak.
Okay, that's fantastic. Then we are going to move to council discussion. And I know everybody has been raising their mics all over the place. But the big question is going to be, do we want to give a general sense of thoughts? I know the administration had five questions, but I heard a lot of questions that maybe everybody would want to go through a general sense before getting into those five? Or does anybody feel like we should just jump into number one? I see one jump in, one jump in. Okay. Then you've got the questions up, and so, let me see if I, so the first question is, does the city council approve of the mayor's proposal to spend the remaining ARPA funds on infrastructure, including the focus on transportation and parks and trails? So, anyone for comments? Councilmember Ray.
I'll get us started. I'm, I'm not sold that this is the right set of priorities. I mean, I love our parks, but my recollection is in the community survey, people said parks are super important, and then they said, and parks are super good. And when we talked, did the survey, people said, transportation is super important and transportation is super bad. And so I would like to see us flip this around a little bit. I mean, we've got the non-motorized transportation corridor on Siamish Road that we've been talking about for years, and, you know, that's something we could do. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we decided we were going to do a light at Providence Point, and we put all of our investment for that year into that project. And you know what? We got it done, and it's making a difference. And so I, I'm not, you know, my colleagues could be of a different mind, I'm just not convinced that this is the community's priority.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. I like the plan a lot, and I really want to echo City Administrator Bob Kowits's thoughts about the over-under crossing. I think when we were at the Highlands Listening Session, I said at that time that we're kind of waving our hands and jumping up and down and trying to get Sound Transit and Metro's attention. I absolutely agree that we have to start spending the money now. By investing $1 million in the design, first of all, we demonstrate the city's commitment to long-term transit improvements. And that demonstration of commitment, I think, is really important. We position ourselves much better to receive county, state, federal support and engagement. We demonstrate to developers that the city's commitment to densifying Central Issaquah is real. So that's a, you know, it's all part, as, as Mayor Pauli said, it's all part of a big puzzle. And by taking some actions, we are signaling to a bigger community what we are really about when it comes to the light rail station. And then finally, I, this is, I love this proposal because it helps us to take control of a project that we've been waiting to, for other agencies to prioritize, for other agencies to recognize. And by making this investment, we take control of this project. We move this project forward. We get it ready for, for the next step. And so I, I think it's, it's absolutely a great idea to do that. The Community Investment Fund, I will try not to get too long-winded on this one. I love this proposal as well. So when I worked at King County Department of Transportation, they also had a community investment fund like this. I was in charge of doing the community engagement for it. It was so well-received by the communities that participated in it and very much followed the guidelines. This is almost precisely exactly what we went out and did. We came up with, we presented the community with specific projects and then engaged them in the process of choosing which one. And in that process, not only did the community become engaged, they became owners of that project. So it's, it's brilliant, especially coming out of a COVID, to have this proposal. And then the, the projects themselves actually got better because of the input that we received from the communities. I think it's a great way to engage our community in discussing transportation, helping them to feel ownership of their community and the way that we go forward, and put some actual money behind that. A lot of times we go out for engagement and then they say, what happened? But this would be something that would really happen. So I don't know if you're ready for me to talk about the parks. That's question number two. Should I go ahead?
No, I'd wait on that. Let's see what else we can hear on question number one. Councilmember Joe, and then Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Council President. I think that putting the $1 million down for the, the terminus, in essence, for Sound Transit is an important stake in the ground for us. You know, it says to the transportation agencies, whether they're state or local or what have you, that we're serious about it enough to put down this $1 million down payment, as the mayor said, and that we want to start that discussion. I kind of think of it as coming to the poker table, so to speak, and saying, you know, here's my ante, and here's my stack, let's start talking about what's going to make it work. You don't get to the poker table unless you put down the money to get to the tournament. We need to put the money down to get to the tournament and start talking about it. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of the $1 million ARPA funds for the terminus project involved in this. And I also like the, the investment fund that, that will get a conversation going with our community. We have been talking about getting out in the communities, whether it's going up to the Highlands or having an event in a park where we're inviting the public to come and talk to us about their issues. And having transportation as a primary issue out there for discussion will get that feedback back from the community that we need to make those decisions. Otherwise, we're making decisions in a little bit of a vacuum, and we can get criticized one way or another for not taking public input. But if we do this process and we carefully listen to the community, I think we're going to get good projects out of it, and we're going to get some movement on transportation. That's all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I agree with the comments that have already been made on the over-under crossing, and I think that's a step in the right direction and am supportive of that. On the Community Investment Fund, I, my, my initial reaction is that we know from many community surveys, including the statistically valid community survey that's done every couple of years, what our community's priorities are. And that survey in particular is done in a randomized fashion, and they collect demographic information. So I think that that's really a good source of information that we already have, and I think we can use that to put some parameters around what this fund could, could be to meet the needs of the community. Looking at that fund for, again, this community investment, I think the things that rise to the top of that, which also rise to the top of the list in our master mobility plan and in the Climate Action Plan because of the multimodal aspect, are things like sidewalk improvements and street repair. So actually, in that community survey, the infrastructure items that residents thought should receive emphasis from city leaders over the next two years, two of the top ones were street repair and the conditions of sidewalks. So I, I think it could be a great way to engage the community, but I would think that we should put some parameters around it and say, you know, where are the sidewalks that are the most important for these connections of these tier-one sidewalks, you know, which are the ones that would be most impactful, and really make sure that we are, we are addressing those longstanding community concerns. And then I think this could be, could be good because we have these longstanding community issues that we haven't, especially in established neighborhoods, that we haven't been able to, that we have not been able to address with, with grant funding or other funding. I also think that the approach here, one of the, one of the top community concerns from the community survey and that we hear is around congestion. And I, I recognize that that is a concern, and I think we are taking smart steps to do what we can here with the traffic or the transportation engineer position, looking to light rail, looking to what we can do for, for projects that will improve the quality of life. Because my concern is that, yes, there is congestion, and that is a real issue, but we could also spend a lot of money and have induced demand with all of the regions around us growing and just more cars going through Issaquah, which would be outside of our control. And really, that, I think, would not then meet the intent of the ARPA funds. So I think we, I think that we avoid that outcome with this, and we take the steps that we can to address congestion, which is a real concern, and then we look to what we can do to improve the quality of life and transportation. So that would be my one consideration for that community fund, is that we, we've heard time and time again, pavement and sidewalks, and I would think that that should be some parameters on that fund.
Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. So I, I support the terminal study. Having a community fund, I think it's a great idea. Coming back to the largest use of the ARPA fund, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the Capital Finance Community Task Force recommendations, and I'm really struck by, in the short term, there was much, there was not a consensus on exactly what to do in the short term. So the recommendation is mix of projects across categories per city council, which is not particularly helpful. However, medium term, which they talked about levy, lid, lift, and TBD sales tax, was suggested transportation primarily. And then the long-term suggestion was for a parks district, for parks and trails. And so I circled back to Councilmember Ray's concern, and, you know, if, if there was a suggestion of doing something on the longer term with parks, you know, using ARPA dollars for that, you know, we recently reached out to the public and had a listening session, and their concern wasn't with parks, right? Their concern was with public safety, and it was almost exclusively about public safety. And the public felt very, 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 very strongly about us wanting us to do some more of public safety. So if you said, for instance, if you did a thought experiment and you said, well, let's just take that 6 million and put it into the 2.4 million and make 8.4 million and have a community outreach of 8.4, which would be big, I grant you, I think the public would tell us they'd want us to spend it on, as you mentioned, roads and traffic and public safety. And while Parks was listed in the report in the quadrant that said continued investment and continued focus, it, to Councilmember Ray's point, it wasn't in the quadrant of important and broken, right? It was in the category of important and, and working well. So I continue to struggle with the mix, I guess is where I'm at. I look at 2.4 million, I look at the terminal study absolutely 100%, community engagement effort, all for it. I think we're going to hear a lot of pub, about public safety, and maybe some about social services, if we go ask the public, because that's what they told us two weeks ago. And then I just don't know about 6 million for Parks right now with the recommendation that we got from the Capital Finance Community Task Force. I just don't know, with, with the guidance that it gave to make that a long-term thing and look at a Parks District, it doesn't feel like we'd be focusing on that. So that's where I'm at. I, I, I think parks are super important, and they're a critical part of our quality of life here, but this mix of taking 6 million of the nine and 9.4 and using it for Parks, I'm not sure I feel great about. I don't feel great about. Thank you.
Thank you. And checking other council members? Okay, count, we'll just go down the line. Councilmember Joe, and yeah.
Yeah. If I could just say a brief comment on Councilmember Martz. I, I think that we all like, would like to have the money spent on particular things that, that, you know, transportation, what have you. We also need to think about the timing of the spending, though. We have to spend it within two years or we lose it. I'm not sure we can do a transportation project bringing in DOT or county or whatever partner we need to bring in for some of these projects to get them done in two years. It took us, you know, how many weeks to get watered in New Orleans after the hurricane? I mean, that's not, that's the federal government, mind you, but what I'm saying is government moves slow, and we have more control over parks and what we can do with them, because all our property, it's our equipment that we're bringing in, it's our people that are doing it. I, I think we can spend that within the two years. I'm not entirely certain that we have the ability to spend the ARPA funds in two years on a transportation project, but, you know, I'd be happy to look at each one of them as we kind of analyze them and parse them out. And if the administration says, yeah, we can get that done in the two years, with the partnerships that we have and the relationships that we have, fantastic, but just a word of caution there.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So to Councilmember Martz's comments as well, when I read the proposal for the Community Investment Fund, I didn't see that that was a community engagement process that was open-ended. I saw some very careful parameters around how they were going to go out, and I really think we're going to ask the community to choose between 1, 2, 3, 5, you know, whatever it may be, projects, and to give input on those projects, which is, again, exactly what we did at, at King County. And we're not asking for input on their other priorities or other items, and we're asking them to engage specifically on, let's, how do we prioritize these set of projects, which isn't something that we've gone out and asked them before. So, so I think that, and I think that's a very valid and very useful parameters to put around that community engagement. I think it yields really good results. I also wanted to talk to the, to the Parks issue. I really, I really like this, and I have, now that Visit Issaquah is reinvigorated, I've been following them, I get their newsletter, and I am just surprised, I shouldn't be, but I've been surprised, by how many times they are touting our green, our parks, our trails, you know, all of the recreational facilities that we have. So it's a real tourist engine, too, and that brings tourist dollars to us. That's the economic engine that Councilmember Hall was talking about. And I also think the focus there is, you know, let's make an investment in one of these anchors. Let's not spread the money around. Let's make a $6 million high-impact investment on one, you know, and my only problem with that is, it's like deciding between three beautiful kids and saying, which one gets to go to college? You know, they're all wonderful projects, and they will all be wonderful assets, and they would all bring economic development to Issaquah. So I'm struggling with, with which one would be. But I think the idea of making that strong investment, not spreading around our money so thinly that we don't really get anything big out of it, but putting it into one project and making that a really strong, high-impact project is really a good idea and a good proposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So I think the conversation has moved into question two, so I'm going to start on the response as far as the parks. And when I was looking at this, the first, at first, I, I had, I think, some of the similar concerns as far as lining this up with longstanding community, community concerns for infrastructure. I do think, though, after thinking about this a lot and looking back at the community survey, I think that ARPA, this funding really is a, provides a historic time where we can fully fund some things that we would not otherwise be able to do, and cities- And cities, uh, have these longstanding lists of infrastructure issues. And I, I think showing that this is what we would do with this funding, it's, it is a really unique opportunity and, um, focusing that funding will better allow us to, to show, um, the results and give something back to the community. So, so that, um, sort of central reason for the focus of the funding in the Parks, it does resonate with me. Um, when I was looking at the specifics of the Parks, um, you know, I go back to this questions in the community survey about the infrastructure items that residents thought should receive emphasis from city leaders of the next two years. The first two I already talked about. The third one is actually walking and biking trails. So Parks does have high satisfaction. They are amazing. Our open space is also amazing and we, we do need to maintain that. There's high satisfaction as well as high importance for those in that quadrant. Where we don't have as much, where, one of the areas where we don't have satisfaction is actually second in terms of congestion. And then the next thing that's high in that high importance, low satisfaction quadrant is planning, zoning and growth. And so when I look at this list, the one that stands out to me on the anchor parks is potentially the Creek Corridor, um, because we need to plan for growth. That, that corridor actually connects all the, all the parks, including Confluence, as well as Tibbetts and Memorial. So if we think about it, I, you know, which beautiful child gets to go to college? This, I think, improves the potential for all of these parks to thrive. It connects them. And we actually don't own all the land on that one. So for that one, um, it's, it's more unique to me. It has some, some things that I think would resonate with the community because it shows we're planning for growth. It shows that, you know, now is the time, these properties will be more expensive in the future. Now is the time to actually make this happen. We talk a lot about that we're planning this connected, um, connected green necklace, but really it's, it's on paper at this point. And we do expect growth and we expect this to be a huge community asset. So maybe this could tie into that, um, need and show that we are planning for growth and planning to make sure that, um, as we grow, we maintain this very special quality of having these open spaces that are so important for quality of life here. Um, so I thought, you know, we also have this unique opportunity with Title 18 where we're redoing our, our code and we're talking about how to make private, um, private properties along this corridor, uh, work with this vision of the green necklace. And so it seemed to me that this is one that lines well with this longstanding issue that the community does have that says important and also low satisfaction, which is planning and zoning. Um, so that was, that was my, my thoughts on those. I, I recognize that Parks generally have this high satisfaction, but it seems to me that this is one area where the community would like to see more and we could take a big step and, and actually make this green necklace, um, come alive. So that, that ultimately is where I landed on if this was addressing the needs of ARPA, if it was supporting community quality of life and, um, if it was sort of rising to the opportunity that we have for this historic funding.
Councilmember Ray?
Um, thank you. I, I'm going to go back to one for a second, then I'll move on to two, since I think we're, we're jumping ahead. Um, so I didn't comment on the, um, funding for the over-underpass and sound transit, which I am completely supportive of the million dollars, but I actually think it's probably more than that. And I think I would rather invest more and, and to steal from councilmember Joe, I'd like to bigger, bring a bigger set of chips to the party or to the game and, uh, definitely, um, demonstrate commitment because it's the best way to move, uh, wash dot and it's the best way to move, uh, sound transit. And I think we can make a bigger commitment there. Um, onto Parks, I'm, I'm still struggling with this one because I don't know if it's a park or Parks, because when I look at question number two, it says, invest in one of the city anchor parks. So it's a singular, not a plural. So I, I don't, and, and it gets really to the heart of my problem with, with the anchor park thing is I don't know what it is. I don't know where it is. I don't know what it is. I don't know what we're going to do. So I can't say, yeah, that's a great investment because I don't have any idea what we're going to do. So without any specificity about what that $6 million is going to do to some park, which I don't know which it is or where they are, could be more than one, uh, I just can't say, yeah, that's a great idea. So that, that's my biggest problem there is I just don't know what it is. And so it might be a great idea, might be a terrible idea. So help me understand what it is.
Uh, councilmember Martz, did you want to? Nope? Okay. Deputy Council President Hall?
Uh, thank you. I have, uh, some very unbaked, unfinished and, uh, raw remarks. So just bear with me. Um, actually, I guess the first remark I'll, I'll make is I don't think the handful of days that I spent preparing for this was enough. So I'm sure many of the, um, direction need, you know, many of the areas that need direction will evolve for me over time between now and the July 5th meeting. I just think these are really important questions and a heck of a lot of money that it's really hard to make a decision in just a couple of days if yes, I agree with this proposal or no, I don't. So, um, that being said, the I-90, um, crossing light rail station planning, definitely in favor of that. Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quince for letting me ask the probing question to get that, that answer. I think that was perfect and exactly what we needed. The community investment fund, um, I think I'm, I'm of two minds on this. I think in the perfect world, it's great. You know, I think you, you look at cities like Seattle or other major cities that have the kind of community-based budgeting systems where they, um, have kind of a pot of money and then go out to a community to say, what is it that, what are your needs and what do you want? You've seen it work really well and successfully in these communities. Um, and how this is described with the parameters, uh, parameters is, I think, something I could, I could live with and be supportive of. We also have lists of projects with community significance already though, so, you know, I sometimes have conversations with residents when I kind of probe this question and say, well, you know, when we have money, you know, it's really good to go out and kind of ask what you need. And every now and then someone says, I've already told you what I need. Like, I've already come to this meeting, I've provided community engagement, like, we elect you to make the decisions about what's best for our community too. So I'm kind of of two minds there. Um, and, uh, that is not very good direction, but I'm just going to leave it at, as that. This will also not be very good direction. For the anchor parks, um, improvement, um, I don't know yet. It's clear to me that investments in parks have great benefit, Issaquah, to creating the kinds of economic prosperity that we want with ARPA funding, um, to having something to point to made possible by federal, federal dollars, um, and historic federal investment. Um, but I'm also of a similar mind to, um, councilmember Ray. Um, I guess I'm just not yet convinced that it's the best use of ARPA dollars. I'm convinced it's a good use of city dollars, period. But I'm not convinced it's the best use of ARPA dollars yet. I, I, um, am definitely pliable at this point though. I think, um, uh, City Administrator Bob Quince made a pretty compelling point for it. I think, um, an emphasis on our Creek Corridor is also an interesting and compelling point. Um, yeah, I think, I think this is tough and I'm going to need some more time to, to digest it. Because at, at, if we were taking a snap poll right now, I, I still think that using all of, all or the vast majority of ARPA dollars on mobility projects would be the best use of ARPA dollars in my mind. But again, I'm convincible the other way.
So I'm going to take a moment to comment on one and two. Um, I think I come to this knowing that our budget season is just a few months away. And I approach any bucket of money, whether it's budget or ARPA. If you, if you gave me a bucket of money and you said, this has to be spent within two years, which is the same thing that you're going to say for budget season, um, if I'm going to evaluate the projects on that, I'm going to look back at the community survey and I'm going to say, what is the community satisfied with? What do we need to do? If it is one-time funds, um, are there capital or infrastructure or one-time spend that we can make? Or is this something that's more up, ongoing revenue and operations costs and hiring and things like that? So when I go and look at this in specific, if I was looking at this from a budgeting standpoint, I would never propose putting forward $6 million to plan an anchor park. I don't think that is what our community has said they need right now. And so I think if we are respecting what the community has said, they've said infrastructure, um, they've said transportation, uh, we have certainly heard through the community survey that funding for sidewalks and street maintenance, um, I just don't see Parks, a $6 million Parks planning project as... You want to correct?
Uh, if, if I may, so the $6 million wouldn't be a $6 million plan. Uh, it would be phase one of implementing the master plan. So we would finish that visioning process this year and then permitting and design would be next year and then construction would be, uh, the year following. So it's not just a plan, it would be implementation of the plan and actual construction.
Can you tell me what the difference is between phase one and just doing the full thing? What does that mean?
Yeah, it, it's a great question. I think we anticipate that, um, some of these, uh, anchor parks, they're big, they have big needs and the community is going to be re-envisioning them for future years to come. So the $6 million likely wouldn't pay for the entirety of the plan, uh, that is envisioned by the community, but would get, um, it, make a really good progress on the first phase, which is still be, to be determined from that, uh, community engagement process.
There's a community engagement process related to the anchor parks or related to?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's getting confusing, but we're talking about a visioning and scoping process to kind of pick up where we left off with that master planning process, which began before the pandemic. So we'd pick up where we left off with that process, finish that visioning and scoping process through more community engagement. Then, once we've developed that vision and scoping, which again, should be by the end of this year, next year would be more about design, permitting, and then the following year, construction. So we, we are proposing $6 million for those three years to cover not only the finishing of the planning process, the permitting process and design process, but also implementation.
Okay. Then I will take a bit of a step back and say, gosh, $6 million is a lot, but I would really need to get a sense of what, what that phase one would accomplish and which of these anchor park projects we are ultimately talking about. So to continue on with the rest of my comments on questions one and two, um, I like focusing on infrastructure. I disagree with the prioritization of Parks. Um, I do support the I-90 over-undercrossing funding. Um, I agree that we might need more than $1 million on that, but I'm a little bit hesitant to put a lot of money into that without knowing that the other stakeholders are actually willing to engage with us. I think, yes, we need to put money down to get them to come to the table, but, uh, just like if I look at our Park Strategic Plan and all of the money that we've put into that planning, I get really hesitant about putting a large amount of money into planning something that may not be something we have a whole lot of control over. So those are my comments on one and two. I see a few mics up, our responses or, okay. Um, councilmember Ray, councilmember Hunt?
Councilmember Martz?
So, uh, Deputy City Administrator, when you describe the process of doing some outreach to the community and then doing planning next year and doing execution the year after, um, I, I guess, and I, I want to say that, I would say this respectfully, I, I'm having a hard time buying the argument that it's a lot easier to do that with Parks than it is to do with some infrastructure improvements or transportation improvements. Um, if we're talking in the scope of $6 million and things that we might be able to do to move the needle, um, they seem about, you, you step back and sort of squint and it, they're both, you know, call it 50 FTE years worth of, um, staff, right? Or maybe 30 to 50 FTE years worth of staff, right? And whether that's Park staff or whether that's, um, um, you know, engineering and facilities staff, it, it seems six of one, half dozen of the other. So, you know, when we come back and talk further, I mean, that's a, a further concern that I have. Why not, you know, why not transportation? Why not infrastructure? When you described that process to me of what we would need to do with Parks, it's like, yeah, just take the word Parks out and replace that with transportation and infrastructure. So.
And if I may, I, I, I can't get over the, the thought that we're not communicating properly. Transportation's really important. We have a master mobility plan. We've hired staff at the council's direction and funding, uh, to continue moving forward with this. We are working at the greatest diligence and speed on these transportation projects. If the council says work with greater diligence and speed, we can do that with some projects, but not every project that is a part of the master mobility plan is within our control. And so as we talk with our transportation engineers, um, and we say, the city council wants you to work as quickly as possible, their response to us is great. We have a step here that we have to spend a wash dot and then we wait an undetermined period of time when that happens. And the city council still wants us to move with diligence and speed, but we sometimes can't because of that. So we're wanting to move forward. We've heard about the East Lacey Semimarch Multimodal. The city council at your last budget said, get it done. Find the money, we will fund it, get it done. And so our engineers are working with this and we're working with the greatest diligence and speed, but it's not all within our control. So that is part of the conundrum with transportation projects. You could say, take $6 million and spend it on the transportation projects. We could staff up and some of them have other stakeholders that are beyond our control. And so it's really important, I think, from the administration's perspective, that you understand that we're not pushing back on transportation. We're simply saying, this is, these are big questions. These are big projects and some of them cost lots more than even the $6 million we have available for ARPA. The community's done a Park Planning Project, we have a Park Master Plan, we have that. If the council says, we want to do one park, not go out, look at all three, that will speed things up even further. So, I mean, the, the issues with the transportation projects are broader than just hiring up staff and going because of those additional stakeholders. Uh, again, we're prepared to go as fast as we can, uh, but again, some of these projects, ultimately, once they're designed, will cost far in excess of $6 million. Others require the, the stakeholders. So, uh, madam, uh, council president, I, I think the administration, I, I'm just concerned that you're not hearing that word, full support of moving forward as diligently as we can. And additional money is helpful, but will not get us to move faster, perhaps some of you just think will be able to move as fast.
So, so are you saying that if we said, you must spend that $6 million on transportation in the next 24 months, are you saying that the adminis-, there just isn't a, a way to spend that money intelligently? Is that, is that what you're saying?
We may have difficulties. And, and council president, when you think appropriate, Robert Hamad, the chief financial officer is on the line. Uh, we'd like to talk a little bit more about the timeframes associated with the dollars. We've not really dealt with that in particular terms this evening, but, uh, we've not, we believe there's some other flexibility that we have with those dollars so that that 24 month clock, uh, perhaps is not as rigorous as we once thought through this process. So we'd like to share that information as an appropriate point. But I think the short answer to your question, councilmember Martz, is forget about ARPA requirements, just the course of spending the money. We're not convinced that we could spend it in 24 months or perhaps even 36 months, uh, because of some of the other constraints. And I, I'm sorry, my back is to you, Andrea, but, uh, that's important to say. We want to do these things quickly. We have the, the plan, we want to implement it. It's just a matter of how and what are the parameters in doing that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I wanted to respond to the, um, the planning, um, comments that you, Council President Walsh made. Um, so I completely agree and had similar concern about plan. A plan is not in itself transformative and is not in itself delivering, I think, the transformative improvements in quality of life that we are looking for with this, again, historical opportunity we have with ARPA funding. So completely agree with that and thought it might be helpful to point, or to, to, um, quote some of the-
some of the numbers from our last CIP on costs. So Confluence Park, it says here $28 million overall project cost. Veterans Memorial Park, $17 million. And then Creek Corridor is $6 million. So for the, for implementation, I do think if we're talking about like wanting to get something done, which I think we do, it would be potentially a piece of one of these projects, unless somebody wants to correct me. But, you know, if we get into implementation and wanting to prioritize based on wanting to have on the ground the projects done, I think looking at the size of these different projects and completion would then be good. But, you know, based on this conversation, first coming to an agreement about, is this the impact of the funds? Again, is this the impact we want to have with the funds? Again, I think there is an argument to be made that it would really improve the quality of life and would deliver on lagging investments on infrastructure, which is what we are trying to do with ARPA funds. So I think the argument is there and is solid, but again, just wanted to point out the very different costs for the different anchor projects, at least in our CIP.
Thank you. So we are at a point, I think we've made our comments on questions one and two. Is anybody ready to go on to question number three, which is about the community investment fund concept? Or might I propose a five-minute break because we've been sitting here for two hours? So, okay, I'm going to go with a five-minute break, and so we will come back at 8:57. Thank you.
Like setting aside a bucket of money to do that and focusing on smaller transportation and parks, trails projects, I think that's all great. I think the criteria are good. In terms of the positions, the only feedback I would have is we have the one term limited position, which makes perfect sense. It's for parks and if we did that. What's the long-term funding plan for the two new or the three new positions in transportation? Would be the only thing because if we're using a spend down initially, do we have, you know, what's our ending fund balance look like? I have a suspicion that we're probably good in the long run, but I just would like to see that played out. So that's my thoughts quickly.
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Sure, thanks. I also have quick thoughts on these two questions. You know, moving forward with the community investment fund concept, I agree that we should keep it and focus on kind of smaller transportation and parks and trails projects, especially because 2 million is 2 million for the, in the grand scheme of things is not, you know, a whole lot of money. So keeping it small will actually make meaningful deliverables for the community to actually see that their decisions had an impact, right? Does counsel have any changes? No, no changes to the selection criteria. I appreciate that it's, you know, really focused on kind of timeline and eligibility, but then also on the categories that were already talked over and over for a couple of meetings, I think, at the Capital Finance Community Task Force. So I think those are good. And then feedback on the proposed next step of going to the committee. Is there anything in particular the administration is looking for on that item in particular? I guess I don't have any feedback on it going to a committee meeting, the next committee meeting, but.
Other options would be whether that comes back to the committee of the whole.
Well, being biased as I'm on that committee, I'm perfectly fine with it going to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. Uh-oh, yeah, that got some mics up. I'm still fine with it. And then any feedback on spending down, no, spending down fund balance? I was glad to see that in this proposal in line with the task force recommendations. And using it on proposed new positions as well as a few other things is certainly a great use for those funds. So, thank you.
Counsel Member Martz, then Counsel Member Hunt.
Thank you. Yes, no, no, and yes. So, yeah, no, I mean, I, yes, it's a fine idea. The focuses are fine. Send it to Mobility and Infrastructure. Why not? Bring, send the fund into the committees. But the, going down to 15%, we have ample evidence that using 15% to 20% results in getting us 25% to 35% to 40% ending fund balance. So choosing for 15% will maybe get us closer to something like 20%, which is what I'd really like to see. So, yeah, I support all of it. Thank you.
Counsel Member Hunt?
Yes, so I agree with the community investment fund concept. I would add a criteria, which you kind of can get to from the existing criteria because one of the criteria is ability to be completed within ARPA timeline and then another is to address pain points in the city. But from the community survey, we do have this infrastructure items that city should focus on in the next two years, and those are street repair and condition of sidewalk are the top two. So I would, I would add that criteria, that they be things that the community specifically said we should focus on in the next two years because that kind of encompasses multiple aspects of the challenge here and we have community survey data on what those things are. And then, yes, agree to the sending to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. And on the ending fund balance, completely agree with Counsel Member Martz.
Counsel Member De Michele, then Counsel Member Jo.
Very similar questions. I agree with the community investment fund. I don't have any suggestions for the project selection criteria, although I like Counsel Member Hunt's thoughts. Yes, please do send it to Mobility and Infrastructure. Love to get my hands on it. Thank you very much. And, yeah, I agree with Counsel Member Martz on the taking down the ending fund balance. So, that's it.
I agree with Counsel Member Martz. Thank you. No. That being said, I believe that number four, spending down the ending fund balance is pretty important because the money is our taxpayers' money. It's money they've already given us and put in trust to us to use, you know, and use wisely. So putting that, getting that fund balance down to reasonable amounts so that we still plan for a rainy day, but are spending the money wisely, I think that's a great thing to do. And then the small focus, the focus on small transportation projects, that's fantastic. I don't have any suggestion for changes in the selection criteria. And as I'm Chair of the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, I would just love to have this back in front of us for additional discussion and maybe members of the public will have some time to digest this a little bit and give us some other comments as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to dive into my comments here. On the community investment fund, I mean, generally, generally, I think we should be focusing more on transportation than parks and trails. So depending on if we go forward with an anchor park project, then I am absolutely in favor of a community investment fund focused on transportation. But toward that idea, I don't think $2 million is enough. I don't think it's enough to get much of anything done. And unless you can really give me a set of proposals that actually get some things done, I think I'm going to come back to this and say, okay, if you've got a bunch of $1 million projects, are we just going to pick the top two? And just, it feels a little bit light. Then on the next one, I appreciate what Counsel Member Hunt said about the project selection criteria and having it be from a pre-set of list of community priorities that have already been indicated. And, yes, I agree it should go to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. On the topic of spending down ending fund balance and the additional proposed positions, on the proposed positions like Counsel Member Ray, I just have concerns and I would need addressed what the continuing positions, what the funding mechanism is going to be in the future because I certainly wouldn't want to hire someone on something that isn't term limited and not have the funding. I think that sets us up for a problem in the future. But I agree, we should be spending down our ending fund balance, but I don't see how this plan does this. I think what, what you've shown here is 2.4 million on unspecified infrastructure projects is just earmarking dollars. It's not actually spending dollars and it's not actually completing tasks. And I think what the community task force said was, you've got the money, you should be spending it. And so toward what Counsel Member Jo said, this is taxpayer dollars. We have an obligation to spend it out, and I have a really hard time looking at that 2.4 million dollars is actually being spent. So I don't know how to address that, but I'm open to ideas.
I'm confused as to how, if it is budgeted to be spent within a fiscal year, how it's not being spent.
From that perspective, it seems, it seems like you're basically just putting a budget proposal in front of us, which doesn't change the fact that you're still coming into a budget season with more than 25% undesignated fund balance. I guess I just don't see how this is any different from coming into budget with that amount unspent.
Well, I think the difference is, again, this is for fiscal year 2023. So we would budget it in 2023 using those fund balance dollars. So as of December 31, 2023, would be what the estimated fund balance would be after those expenditures. And the administration is looking at additional expenditures above and beyond infrastructure spending. So we would anticipate that this would be, in essence, an earmark for the 2023 budget that we would put toward capital spending. There are other recommendations and proposals that we'll make for other portions of the fund balance. I think we're trying to get a sense from the council, is 15 too far?
15 is not too far. And I very much appreciate the focus on infrastructure and, you know, capital projects and spending. So I'm generally in favor of that. I just, I want to make sure we're actually spending and not just earmarking. So.
And just to finish the thought, we would propose it in the budget, that it would be spent.
Okay. Counsel Member De Michele, follow up.
Thank you. I didn't comment on the additional proposed positions, and I really, it's more of a question than it is a comment, but we, there are a couple of positions that I think, it looks like these positions that you are recommending are related directly to the funds that are being spent. Going forward, there are a couple of positions that I think would be really important, but I'm presuming that when we have our retreat, we'll be able to propose additional positions that could be needed in other areas such as the Sustainability Office. And so, so it looks like these positions are, you selected these positions based on their direct relevance to the other expenditures. Is that correct?
That's correct. This strategy is really about infrastructure investment and how the city can move the needle on infrastructure investment. It is not meant to be an exhaustive proposal on addressing all staffing needs. There are going to be more conversations about that through the budget process and, you know, we're, we'd be eager to hear counsel's feedback on that in terms of other areas, other positions, et cetera.
So that would be, the appropriate time would be at the retreat to talk about additional positions that we're interested in considering. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I think we've heard everybody's response on questions three and four. So moving on to the last question, what is city council feedback on the timing for medium term actions, including facilities needs in 2023 and addressing new revenue sources for additional investments in transportation and parks, infrastructure? Counsel Member Martz.
Thank you. I think that, I'm not a fan of looking at both the transportation ballot measure and exploring a park district simultaneously. I think that the financial task force considered the transportation ballot measure a medium term item, but it considered the Parks District a long-term item, and I think it was an intentional separation of those two. I think talking about and considering putting both of those in front of the voters simultaneously would be a challenge. So I personally would like to see the Parks District item moved out until after resolution of a transportation ballot measure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the transportation was proposed for 2024 and the parks was proposed for 2026?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So just. So I can walk, I can walk us through this. So in 2024, it anticipates the beginning of the conversations regarding any transportation ballot measure. Also, in 2024, we would be completing the park strategic plan. And in the conversations regarding the park strategic plan are going to include, you know, how do we pay for this and contemplate that park district that was recommended by the task force? So it's really the beginning of those conversations and utilizing the community engagement process for the strategic plan to begin some of those conversations about a park district. But, but a ballot measure, this is suggesting, would not be proposed until we've figured out what we're doing for transportation. So we can kind of utilize some of those processes that are underway to start having conversations about it, but in terms of developing it further, getting it ready for a vote, that would occur after a transportation ballot measure.
I think it's a huge mistake for us to even talk about a Parks District while we're contemplating a transportation ballot measure. And you've got complete Parks District proposal ballot six years, or four years from now, when the task force said six to nine. So I thank you for the explanation. I feel as strong, I mean, I feel really personally very strong about this. Thank you.
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Thank you very much. I guess respectfully, I disagree. I think that this timeline meets the urgent needs of all three categories. You know, we did vote as a task force to have parks in the six to nine range, this park district in the six to nine range, but there are many task force members, including myself, who advocated for, you know, ensuring that we're doing the planning work very far in advance so that way it doesn't sneak up on us. So I actually think that this is in line with considering the urgency of the needs and it makes a lot of sense to me. I hadn't really, you know, thought deeply about what next steps for facilities would be, but, you know, starting next year on engaging for that sounds right to me, too. It actually seems pretty, what's the word I'm looking for? It's a lot for next year. So I wanted to ask if the administration feels like they can accomplish everything they need to, because 2023 is going to be a big year with this plan. So does the administration have, feel confident about their ability to deliver, you know, good progress next year?
They're all big projects. They're all different people. I mean, so one of the challenges as we look at next year's budget is what else is there? I mean, this, this 2023 column is largely what we'll be doing as a city in 2023. With the possible additional inclusion of next steps after Title 18, these are the big issues. We have not even talked about office facilities for the city. You know, we're vacating a large building. What do we do with it? That's a big question. And so there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done here. I think we feel there's a sense of urgency to keep all of this moving. We're coming off of two years of not getting a lot done because of the pandemic, but they're different people, but this will be the, a real primary focus of the city government next year.
Well, then, yes, supportive of the timeline as presented. Thank you.
Counsel Member Jo.
Thank you. I, I think the feedback that I'd be giving for the medium term action, the facilities needs are certainly important. We want to take care of our people. We want to make sure that they have a safe working environment, a working environment that allows them to be productive and conveys to them that the leaders on the city council, or just speaking for myself as a leader on the city council, appreciate the hard work they do, the long hours that they put in, and we want to have a nice facility for them to work. And we want our firefighters to also have a great facility. Now, with respect to the court, I'm a little bit biased because I've sat there as the municipal court judge myself, and the improvements that they're talking about here are the improvements that'll streamline things and allow a smoother operation for the court. It's not, they're going to have plush seats for all the jurors or anything like that along the way. So I'm anxious or excited to look at what that might involve, just to make sure we're modernizing our court, making sure that we're able to cut down on transportation costs because we have good video facilities and allow for smooth operations. The last thing that I would comment on, just, I think that the timing of the transportation and the parks, infrastructure, you know, votes, I would like to see them a little bit farther apart. I think the transportation one does need to go first, but we want to just be very clear that we want to get the transportation one done first before we start having a conversation that's too in-depth about the parks one. Now, that doesn't mean we're not doing work as a council and the staff is not doing work to figure out how we're going to put that together, but the conversation that we're having externally with the community, I just don't want us to confuse the community and get them to think about two projects at once. We really need to focus on the transportation project first, get it done. We can do all our internal stuff, but then roll it out after the vote is taken on, on the transportation one would be my preference.
Counsel Member Hunt?
One thing, I think this is, makes sense as a strategy timeline, but I know that in the past, we've had a start and then a stop of a conversation around transportation ballot measure. And I, those things can happen. There can be, you know, things can be overtaken by events or the needs could change and it might, this timing might not work out. And it seems to me that as a strategy, it makes sense just recognizing that it may not be possible on this timeline. It seems optimistic to me. There are a lot of, a lot of things going on and a lot of things could, I think, change. One other thought I had is, I think the, the parks issue matters, the, Mayor Polly talks about this being a puzzle. I think the Parks District proposal ballot measure that is related to what we decide to do as far as the, the investment right now in parks or not, because we do have a number of parks that I think ultimately the vision that the community has is to, to make transformational improvements. So I think if we start that now, then I think that sets us up for a parks measure that could be further out and could take into, to account those changes that were made using ARPA funds. But I think in the, in the puzzle of things, that's how I'm thinking about it. So I'm not opposed to, and I think it's, it's actually probably likely anyway, that the Parks District ballot measure would get pushed further and there would be more separation from the transportation ballot measure. But I also think there's a relationship here with the investment we make right now with parks. And again, if we make that investment in parks, maybe that sets us up for that later decision, but also gives the community a transformational change now.
Counsel Member De Michele.
I don't have much in addition to add, except that perhaps it would be easier to look at this by what we're doing externally and what we're doing internally. And the external communications does need to be really clear and focused, but at the same time, we're working internally to prepare for the parks measure. And I think we can do, do both of those, but I do agree that the conversation out to the community really needs to be focused and clear. And other than that, I think the timeline looks really good and great job on the, on the materials that were presented tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Member Ray? No, you've already, have you made your comments? Okay, and back to me.
I am very eager to explore facilities and get a sense of what our facility needs are. As Counsel Member Jo said, you know, municipal court, fire station, city hall or workspace facilities, those are all very important. I appreciate exploring a funding plan because those are big, big dollars, and I think that's definitely an area where we could look at some debt as an option. I still remain unsold that any of the transportation needs that we have right now would make a successful ballot measure, but I'm happy to explore it. And I think if we can come up with a good set of items, then I would put it ahead of a park district. But again, I just, I remain unsold that we have moved in any direction significantly from the last time we did a transportation ballot measure, that I just, yeah, I don't want to go down that road again. And I do think that exploring whatever we would for a park district requires internal and external conversations, and so we just need to be aware of how that falls in between things. But generally, and I guess the other comment I have is, all of this seems fairly ambitious considering we're, we have the Title 18 whiteboard list considering we have our comprehensive plan update that has to come through. I mean, more power to us if we can accomplish it, but I'll be looking for what we're addressing in the budget as ways to handle those things. Counsel Member Martz?
Thank you. So I have run successful bond and levy campaigns as part of the volunteers for Sequoia Schools, and I think we would be in a very different position in a couple of years to run a transportation, potential transportation ballot than we were last time. I think we learned a lot from the last time we tried to run a bond and, which, again, would have passed had it been a levy. I think that we have a strategic plan in place and we have now years of community engagement on what our priorities are that we didn't have the last time we tried to run one. So I think it would be a very, very different and much more educated conversation with our community than it was the last time. And so I'm eager to see where that conversation goes as a, as a city. Thank you.
Okay, as we near 9:30, I guess I would say we have gone through all of the five Can you talk through what the next steps are, what you've heard, what you plan to bring back to us for the July 5 meeting?
Sure, thank you very much. I am very impressed because that was a lot to get through, so I really appreciate all of that feedback. So we are going to follow up on July 5 at that meeting. I think that there's additional conversations that we need to have regarding the parks proposal for the anchor park, so we'll put together some materials based off of the questions we heard tonight. And also, I think we'll be hearing a little bit more from our Chief Financial Officer, Robert Hamud, on debt and ARPA funds as well. And so we'll prepare some of that information, take the feedback that we heard from you this evening regarding some of your concerns, and return for more discussion on July 5.
Okay, Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Just really quick and generally, but I just wanted to make sure Deputy City Administrator Snyder, Andrew knows how much this council appreciates all the work that you've put into this effort. It's been a long time now shepherding it from the beginning of the task force all the way to coming up with a proposal and now dealing with all of our questions and comments up here. So really greatly appreciate all the work that you've done to, to bring this mammoth of infrastructure investment strategy and vision from birth to here. And just, thank you.
Counsel Member Hunt?
Thank you. One suggestion for some other information that I think would be helpful. So I did have a conversation with City Administrator Bob Quitz before the meeting about some of the longstanding infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, like sidewalks on Squawk and the multimodal South Cove project and, and those and where they were and, you know, I think that that information would also be helpful because in reviewing this, I was looking at the CIP and the Master Mobility Plan and then the community survey, and there's just a lot of information that's in a lot of places. And so I think, I think explaining the timeline for those, explaining the funding strategy that is in place would, would be helpful and would also give us a sense of the more holistic look at what the administration is planning for those longstanding projects. So that would be my information asked for you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated summary. I think at this point, we can say we are done, and that is the only other item on our agenda. So at this point, at 9:30 PM, we are adjourned. Thank you.